All right, good morning, everyone. To the October 16th Trinity County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you. And before I read the items for closed session, I just want to report out of a previous closed session on October 1st. Information was received on all items and no direction was taken. All right. Moving on to item 1.1 Government Code Section 5494.5 Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, Number of Cases: One. Also, item 1.2 Government Code Section 54954.5b Conference with Real Property Negotiators, APN 025-430-12 Agency Negotiators for Tippet, Negotiating Parties Tucker Trust, Under Negotiation Price and Terms of Payment. So with that, would anyone like to speak, comment on these two closed-session items before we move into closed session?
Madam Chairman, point of clarification, I have comments on the closed-session item and also general public comment not related to an agenda item?
That would come after.
Okay.
As it's laid out on the agenda. So you can come back at 10 and do that.
Okay. I hope my time hasn't started yet because of that point of clarification. Thank you. Madam Chairman, members of the Board, there are different rules for closed-session items dealing with anticipated litigation than those that deal with pending litigation. The agenda for the closed session today says anticipated litigation, one case, and it's not otherwise identified. So the closed session today can only deal with that one case of anticipated litigation, whatever it is. And the facts and circumstances underlying that case must be publicly stated. That's Government Code, I can cite the Government Code sections on that. That hasn't been done yet, the facts and circumstances underlying the mysterious one case, and it should be. Now, it seems to me the Board's choices at this point are these. In closed session, do not discuss any aspect of the TAA case and make, and the Board should make public the facts and circumstances underlying the one case that is going to be discussed in closed session. Or go through the process of amending the agenda to state that the closed-session item will deal with TAA versus Trinity County, one or the other. Now, if the Board does intend to discuss any aspect of the TAA case in closed session today, I submit that that can't be done and it should be done in open session, both because it is not agendized to be discussed in closed session and just in fairness to the public to get this information out clearly. I hope I'm wrong, but it appears that there are a number of maneuvers that have occurred with the intent of keeping from the public what's going on with respect to the TAA settlement. And I have more comments when we get to the specific item of the closed session on that. These comments are just open public comment prior to any items being called. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move into closed session?
No.
What?
Point of order, I have comments about the closed session as well. Those were comments, general public comments.
Those were, I was allowing you to make note of the items going into closed session.
You're right, you did, I apologize.
And then, I would expect you, if you have more, to come back at 10 to talk about public comments.
Yeah, my mistake, and really I do apologize.
Okay. With that, we will move into closed session. Thank you for your patience while we return to our closed session. Reporting on a closed session, the Board gave direction not to initiate litigation. Moving on to public comment, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this Board. When addressing the Board, please state your name for the record and address the Board as a whole through the Chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the Chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on subsequent Board agenda. All right. Anyone wishing to step up for public comment?
Good morning. I'm Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director, and I'm here with Chrissy Anderson, Environmental Health Director, this morning. I just wanted to give kudos to Chrissy and share with you all that she received an award, an award recently from the California Conference of Directors of Environmental Health. This was a Presidential Support patient award for her work to recognize distinguished service and promotion of environmental health in the state of California. And I'd like Chrissy to tell you a little bit more about this award, and I just wanted to just, again, bring her kudos and just thank her for the wonderful job that she does.
Great.
Thank you so much, Kim. So basically, it was an excellent environmental health award. Trinity County has never received this type of award, and I'm very honored to receive that on behalf of Trinity County and the work that I've done. It had pertained to a presentation in Hazmat dealing with some of the illegal pesticides and black market cannabis and manufacturing presentation that I did.
Great. Congratulations.[443.12][443.12](Applause) All right. Anyone else for public comment? All right. One more?
Madam Chair, I'm John Letton, Douglas City, and with TAA, whose purposes, I might add, are to actively promote transparency in government, among other purposes. Commenting on the TAA county litigation, TAA was notified by the county's attorney the afternoon of August 6th that, quote, "We got DOS approval for the settlement." The settlement agreement was signed on August 7th. There was an agreed press release that was hammered out with County Council Supervisor Morris over the next couple of days, and that was released to the Journal on the 9th. And the Journal's copy, I brought some copies of the front page of the Journal from August 14th, that is accurate, and there's some extra copies back there. If we run out of extra copies, if anybody's interested, I suggest they go to the Journal and buy the back copies. In any event, I should add that in that article, there were a couple of comments attributed to Richard, which put a bit of a spin on the settlement, but nevertheless, it was all agreed as to what was going to be said, and it's accurate. On October 1st, Margaret's partner, David Prentice, who undoubtedly had conferred with her before the meeting, gave you some advice that a check couldn't be signed without a separate vote by the Board, that there was no vote taken on the settlement on August 6th, that you can approve it or not, it's not yet settled, and it went on and on from that. Ladies and gentlemen, that advice was wrong, and wrong is one of the kindest words I can think of to describe that. What the Board should do today is, sometime or other, acknowledge publicly that ratification by the Chair, of the Chair's signature on that settlement agreement was never a necessary legal step, that the TAA settlement agreement was indeed binding on both parties no later than August 9th, and apologize to the public for all the confusion that's been caused by the Board on this subject. I remind everybody that the Board has met seven, this is the seventh meeting since that August 6th closed-session meeting and vote, and not yet have we had the report out. That should be done also. Why all the mystery? Why all the trouble to keep something secret? I don't know. It gets more Trumpy and all the time. The cover-up is much worse than the original sin of not reporting out that August 6th vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
Jim Stoa, Hayford, California. I'd just like to remind the Board of Supervisors that they take a oath when they took office to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and of California. They are denying that through ballot major application, Article 11, Section 7.5. A city or county major proposed by the legislature body of a city charter, city, county, or charter county, and submitted to the voters for approval may not do either of the following. It specifies may not do it. Include or exclude any part of the city charter or county or charter county from the application or effect of provisions based upon approval or disapproval of the city-county major or based upon casting specified percentage of votes in figure of the major by the election of the city charter, city, county, charter county, or any part thereof. Now, here we are in 2000 discriminating against PUD buyers to pay for this hospital, Trinity Mountain Community Healthcare District, and the rest property owners in the county that are not having PUD are getting off scot-free. The rest of the people that don't, or have PUD are getting off scot-free, and it's wrong. It is a violation of unconstitutional rights, and I think we ought to start a recall. Thank you.
Okay. I will make a clarification during the public comment. As we have confirmed in last week's paper, of course, the contract is valid and is going forth, and our knowledge is the check was cashed, and there was certainly some confusion last week, and we apologize for any confusion on that, but there's, it is still moving forward as we mentioned in last week's paper. So, all right, moving on to presentations. 2.1 Receive a presentation from Human Response Network Empowerment Services Program Director Julie Goldston regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month, no fiscal impact.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here. So, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and marriage license fee currently includes statewide need to help fund domestic violence shelter-based programs. We thank you for continuing to make survivors of domestic violence in Trinity County a priority by contributing local marriage license fees dollars to provide vital domestic violence services for survivors. As many of you know, often survivors come and need shelter, and they don't have any of their own belongings and things like that, so we provide them with all that. In our last grant year, we provided over 2,000 dead nights for survivors, and so that is definitely a number that we are seeing there is increasing, I think in part because we are being successful in outweaving about our services. So in the last grant year, Human Response Network Empowerment Services served 114 survivors of domestic violence, and we follow the survivor at any stage in that process, and that could be from the initial heading to chapter law enforcement, going to court, and all these kind of things, and we will be there supporting them in any way we can. We also go to the ER if it's needed, or we go into medical appointment or social services appointment related to the domestic violence incident. So to celebrate this month and to celebrate survivors and spread awareness, we have put purple clothes up and down the streets on Main Street, and we currently have a banner over Main Street encouraging people that want to support survivors to wear purple. We are also going to have an installation at the corner of the four-way stop across from CHP where we are going to illuminate 114 purple flags to honor survivors of domestic violence.
What's the date on that?
It is going up right now.
Okay.
So we should be able to see it. It is solar light, so I predict should be tomorrow night it should be visible, and it will be there for the rest of the month. But we really truly thank you for all your support. It's so important when you're serving survivors that we have full community support, and so we will appreciate it.
Thank you. Great. Thanks for your work. Questions, Board?
Yep. The significance of 114?
Significance?
Why 114?
Oh, we are all grant-funded, and we count every survivor, so 114 is the amount of survivors we have served within the last 12 months in Trinity County.
So we want it down to zero in the future?
Yes, that would be wonderful. Yes, yes, that is what we want, and we hope that everybody will spread awareness about all the services we have because it is beneficial to the entire family if we can get people help as quick as possible so that it doesn't escalate. And we always need volunteers, so if any of you guys should be interested or know someone that's interested, please call me or come and talk to me.
In the bags?
Yeah, so in the bags, there is different goodies and information, so you guys can get that, and I also had the presentation here, I said, with all the numbers, and if you guys have any questions about it, just please feel free to come to me.
Now, in the past, we used to, let's see it here, and maybe you can send an email to the Board, we would see per area of the county where the cases were coming up.
A zip code or a district?
Yeah, or district, and if by chance we had like a five-year history, I'd love to see it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Questions or comments? No, thanks for all your work that you guys do out there.
Thank you so much for your support.
Great, thank you. Okay. Moving on to 2.2 Receive a presentation from County Council Margaret Wong regarding Closed Session 101, No Fiscal Impact.
Thank you for the opportunity to do this. It's October, October, November, December happen to be training months for...
Madam Chair, if I could, a point of order, what about public comment before this agenda item?
Public comment is after.
After? Thank you very much.
So I just want a clarification, Margaret. Were you referring to general public comment that we just went?
No, no, public comment on the...
Just wanted to make sure, John.
Got it, yeah. Got to get the presentation before folks can come on it.
Okay.
So it's October, November, December are training months. We get training and go up and down the state and provide trainings, and I realize that we haven't had a training for you in a while, and so there's some questions that have been coming up recently that I thought it would be good just to have a brief presentation, hopefully it won't take too long, on the Brown Act in closed session and what it means, and be able to answer any questions the Board may have on the topics. Am I going to click or you can click right now? Yeah, she's my clicker. Okay. So, you know, closed session is a provision under the Brown Act that allows the Board to meet without the public being present on a certain issues, and the issues that you can meet in closed session on are very limited, and the ones that we have utilized up here, the ones that we see most often, pending anticipated litigation, that allows you an opportunity to give advice, direction to your counsel on how you want them to proceed forward, making determinations how you, if you want to initiate litigation, or how you want to proceed. Personnel actions, because the Constitution has a right to privacy for all employees, you have the right to talk about employees that are direct report to you in closed session, and that includes not only evaluations, but appointments and discipline and dismissal. There's a caveat to that, is that if you are going to pursue a dismissal against an employee, they have to have 24 hours notice in advance, and they have the right to actually make it a public hearing. It's not the Board's discretion, it's there, if they would like to have it heard in public, then that is the case. The case that I'm citing there, the Duval versus Board of Trustees, is an interesting case that's been utilized by the courts to talk about what does it mean to do an evaluation in closed session. I know this issue came up a couple of years ago with a grand jury, and they were questioning why we were doing more than just our annual evaluations in closed session. And what this case says is that when you're a direct report to the Board, you have to have the opportunity to get guidance and direction from them, and otherwise, you know, it's hard having five bosses, and by the way, happy Bosses' Day, it's hard having five bosses, and you need to know what the direction they're giving you as a whole, if you can't meet with them individually and get direction. So the Duval case says that if you're a direct report to the Board, you can go into closed session and ask them to give you direction on how they want you to perform the functions of your job. Of course, you can't vote on anything in closed session, you can't make any actions, do any contracts, just to give advice, anything of that nature would be done in open session. And this case has been utilized in, I think, Monterey County most recently, the court came out very strongly in saying that you have to have the ability to ask your bosses how to do your job, and so that that has to have the capacity to do that. Real estate negotiations, labor negotiations, and then threats to public security. So if there's a threat to the safety of employees or anything related to the building, you are allowed to go into closed session and bring your sheriff in and discuss how to protect the safety and the welfare of your county employees. Okay, next one. One of the questions we get all the time is, well, can I just go and meet in closed session with the Board? You know, I want to talk about some issue or something that I'm very passionate about, I just want to meet with them in closed session. And the answer is no. The only folks that can meet in closed session are the five members of the Board and any staff members who play, so the official or essential role in the closed meeting. Typically, that would be your County Council, your CAO, and if it's something related to a specific department, then your department head. You can also bring in outside counsel if it's a specific issue, and those are the only folks that can be in there. You can't bring in opposing sides on litigation, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, but you can't bring anyone else but the five members and the necessary staff to perform the job. For closed session, it is a 24-hour notice. There are certain items that can't be done in closed session, and those are stated in the Government Code, but for those items that can be done as a special meeting, it's a 24-hour notice. It's obviously 72 hours if you're doing it in a general meeting, and it has to be done in a place that's physically accessible, even though it is in closed session, you still have to have the ability to do that. And it still has to be noticed on your website, which is the new law that came down in 2018 that requires us to agendize our website if we have one, and requires this in County to have one. The language that is in the closed session is not something that we make up, it's very specific, and it's actually stated in the Government Code what we can say and what we can't say. There's a really good, it's ILG, and I can't remember what that sounds like, it's International Legal Guidance, I don't, I just made that up. I don't know what it is, but it's a website that you can go to that actually has a cheat sheet of all the languages that, the language you can use in order to get in closed session. As above, I just used one sample of it. It will give you this, and you just fill in the blanks to figure out what you want and need to want to do. So it's pretty clear in terms of how you have to agendize something. The clerk makes the agenda and does that, but utilizes this section in order to make a determination of how they're going to put the language in there. A lot of times, people say, why don't you put more information in there? And that's because we're following what the Government Code requires us to in terms of putting the exact language in. Another question we get often is what about teleconferencing? If a Board member is being teleconference into a closed session, they do have to follow the teleconference rules, meaning they have to post the agenda outside of their location, it has to be listed in the agenda that they're there, and it has to be opened up to the public for the public's portion of it, and then the public, of course, will be excluded for the closed session. That doesn't apply to staff. So if a staff member is calling in, if you hire an attorney who works out of LA, and they're going to call into closed session to give you advice, that's not considered a public location, so that would not be posted on your agenda and would not be publicized. But if a Board member is calling into closed session, it would be. In fact, I had a situation where we had a City Council I worked with, one of the, one of the council members was a police officer and wanted to call into closed session from his vehicle, his patrol vehicle, because he was on call that night, and he couldn't figure out a way to post the agenda on the outside of the patrol vehicle and let folks in, so the answer was no, he couldn't do that. Okay. And then, next issue is what has to be done prior to closed session? So the Board has to make an announcement of when you're going into closed session, so you'll notice the Chair always reads the agenda item into the record, and then there's an opportunity for the public to comment. The public can comment on anything they want related to that agenda item, and that has to be done prior to going into closed session. What happens in closed session, of course, is confidential, but what happens after a closed session, there's some very good guidance in terms of how you have to handle it. The Brown Act requires you to report out a closed session. There's very clear what you do have to do, it can either be done orally in writing, it should be done at the same meeting, sometimes it can be carried over under specific circumstances, but typically it will be done orally at the end of the meeting, but again, it can also be done in writing. There's, when you're doing some, there's some provisions there, so when you're doing negotiations or you're doing litigation, where you're not going to report out until the decision is final, and when that's final, it has to be reported out. Now, the question, of course, is that everyone's wondering, when does something become final? And that's the question that is, you know, the million-dollar question, when does something become final? It becomes final as far as a council is concerned when it's got signatures on it and it's complete. So typically, when you're negotiating something in closed session, the direction will be given to your negotiator, if you're doing like the labor negotiations, and then when it's agreed upon and ready to be signed, that's when it becomes final, and that's when the report is out. How it's done in Trinity County, and just to let you know, County Council's Association has a wonderful group of emails trained where we all, all the County Councils email each other when we have any questions. So we threw out this question about when do you consider it final and how do you do it, and so the answer that we received overwhelmingly is that the way Trinity County does it is consistent with how other counties are doing it in the state, which is typically when a matter is final, a direction is given to your negotiator or your attorney to finalize it, and then typically, our HR Director or County Council or the CAO will bring it back, and we've done this for, since before I started here, will bring it back for ratification just to make sure that it's become public and that it goes out, it goes out and it's affirmed for the record going forward. So once it's negotiated and once it's signed, then it becomes a public document as well and can be requested at any time. Confidentiality, that section's been an issue that's come up before. All matters that are discussed in closed session are required to remain in closed session. If failure to do so is a misdemeanor under that Government Code section. It's, I always find it interesting that, you know, it's difficult, I know it's hard when folks ask you, they want to know what time in closed session, and it's hard for Board members to say no, but maybe this is more for the public, is that they have to say no because if they don't, it can have some personal liability for you as well. Keeping it quiet as required by law is very important in order to ensure that it has the appropriate sanctities and the rights to privacy, especially when your innocent employees or other matters are protected. So closed session, again, you won't include an adversary, we don't negotiate actual resolution in closed session. It happens all the time, people say, well, I'll just want to bring my attorney and discuss this with you, that doesn't happen in closed session. We don't mediate in closed session, we don't have any discussions, you know, all that you have is the Board receiving guidance from their council and their staff and taking action going forward. And the last matter I wanted to talk And the last matter I wanted to talk about is this recent case that came down, I don't know how recent it is, but New Hull County Water District. That was a case where the district was sued because when they did the agenda, they did some old numbering in there. It wasn't correct. And the water agency sued and said that's a violation of the Brown Act. And what the court said is that while it's technically not correct, there is a little bit of latitude in when agendizing items under the Brown Act that you, we don't need to be hyper-technical to form. The issue is, is there enough information to make it public? And so there are times where something might be technically a tiny bit off, as long as it's made the determination that it's a significant notice to the public and it's done in the best intent. Those are issues that do not result in rescission or any issues related to the order, whatever's passed or not passed. So again, that's just, that's the, what do you say, 50-foot view of the closed session. But I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of what the laws related to it are and open it up for any questions the board may have on this specific issue.
All right, thank you, Margaret. As we, a good review for everyone and answer the public. Board members, questions?
Will I have a chance after the review on the public?
Sure, yep, we can do it that way, too. Anyone from the public wishing to ask comment, ask a question or comment on the item, please step to the podium, Wayne.
Madam Chair, Board, Wayne Agner, Trinity Journal. I noticed the one part, Margaret, skipped over rather quickly, was that in reporting out, the vote and/or abstention of each member present is required to be reported out. We are still waiting for that from the August 6 closed session. She indicated that when signatures are on the settlement, that it is final. Your signature and the attorney's signature is on the settlement. So that tells me it's final. So I'm asking you once again, as I've done both informally and formally, to report out the vote from the August 6 closed session in which this board agreed to a settlement with T A A. The public deserves it. It's part of the Brown Act and you should be following the Brown Act. And as you have probably been instructed at some point, you are personally liable for not following the Brown Act. So I ask you to do what is right and let the public know how each of you voted. Thank you.
So you, I'll wait till I ask questions after.
Again, John Lafferty of the City, speaking individually, not for an organization. One general proposition that wasn't covered, and Margaret's more of an expert on this than I am, if you may correct me. But so far as I know, closed sessions are required only in very limited circumstances. The board has the discretion to do in public many of the things which the board may do in closed session. I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. On the page that was entitled "After Closed Session", there is emphasis on the fact it only has to be, settlement only has to be disclosed after settlement is final, underlined. What isn't underlined and what wasn't put on that page is it must be, a settlement must be reported out as soon as possible after the settlement is final. Again, I remind you, this is the seventh meeting since that was changed. With regard to the penalties in the sheet entitled confidentiality, the code section cited is a general provision that says if there's no specific penalties set for a violation of an official's duties, you being the officials, then a violation may be treated as a misdemeanor. I don't think that section ever is used for prosecution. The Brown Act also specifically has remedies for violation of the confidentiality of a closed session. So 1222 wouldn't apply. Within the Brown Act, there was provisions provide for the discipline of an offending employee, injunctions to prevent further violations, and in some circumstances where the court feels it is appropriate, reporting of future closed sessions. Those are the specific steps that are authorized in the Brown Act. This idea that there's a penalty of a misdemeanor prosecution, I think, is an exaggeration. Now, I'll leave it to you all to decide if that's a veiled threat to somebody or not, but I don't think it's an accurate statement. Again, I may be paranoid. I ask you to bear in mind that the paranoid are correct some of the time. But this presentation seems to be part of an overall spin to validate some action or lack of action of the board that is not valid. And I just hope that things get cleared up soon and the public deserves it.
Anyone else? Okay. Margaret, obviously, this was trying to help for last week's last meeting's confusion that we've all experienced. So did you want to tackle, you touched upon the final, the word "final" and that is part of our process. And I think there's some confusion about the county's process and that might help clear some things up.
Absolutely. And the process applies not just to what happened last week. I don't want to, I'm not going to address that in this item because it wasn't agendized, just globally, how we handle it and how we've done it for, before I came on board and I think a long way back. So when the board is in closed session and negotiating an item, and again, it can be a real estate negotiation, it can be a litigation and it can be, it can even be an employee M O U. The board provides direction to your negotiators or your attorneys on how to proceed. Then staff takes that and takes the direction and follows it. And when the direction you give us is binding, we follow your direction. When the matter is finally closed, we feel we have enough, we have enough direction from you, how to proceed to get to a final resolution about it. That we typically, not typically, we always bring it back to the board for a ratification to make sure it's exactly what you wanted to do. Sometimes we've done this in closed session. Sometimes we can do, we do it in open session. Typically, we do it in open session under consent where we give you a list of the matters that have been resolved. And then you vote to make sure that they're accurate and they reflect the direction you provided. And that, after that opportunity, then, of course, the documents are public and available at the clerk's office for anybody to review. And that's the standard procedure that we have used since, again, before I started here.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Well, I think part of the confusion is, was what we directed last week. But in a general, total worldview, I think it would be, I mean, I would like to see a final contract approval that the board still has when the deal is done, a last look before it's just ratified. So with that, I think, I would hope the board, we could look at our practice and have good direction for you guys to look at practicing with the C A O to come up with the best practices for this moving forward. And I don't know if that's a pleasure for the board or not, but it would be, it would be nice for us to have this come forward when we have a deal that is completed or else if it comes up.
And I do understand there was a timeframe to get some of the processes in this recent contract. So I agree, we should maybe review our process, fine tune it so it can come to the board first.
Moving forward, put together a resolution looking at best practices as key wishes for what other counties do or specifically if other counties don't do them, what is actually the best practice required by the state so we don't run into this problem ever again or future boards don't.
Yeah, I agree with the call on that. I think that is an absolutely appropriate request and I support it and I'm happy to do that. I think there is, without having clear direction from staff's perspective, you know, we are following our past practices. But from the public's perspective, if I can understand why it appears that there's something going on behind the scenes that's not actually happening. And so by having the board actually have that final look at it and actually vote on it and then have that vote reported out as required as the Brown Act, I think that would clarify a lot of the concerns and confusions we're having. Because otherwise, there's assumptions that a final product came out of a closed session when it maybe did not. Maybe it was just direction that was given and how to move forward. So I think that would be good and I'm happy to proceed forward in that way.
And at the same time, we'll also discuss some of the other items that are coming along with this, some of the other trash, garbage. Reporting out closed session, that can also be explained. And we also need to take a look at a final on the signature, ratification on the signature. So perhaps acting forward at the same time.
Yeah, again, and I think, you know, the way that it's being done is compliant through the Brown Act, but there's also a way to do it better. And I think that's what we're looking for and I'm happy to help find a better way to do it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
So with that said, I'll go back to our report on closed session this morning.
All right, to the.
I have a question. So we did not announce the vote in that? Is that what's required or is?
Do you mean, I mean literally what the actual vote was?
Yes.
Well, you chose not to take action, so you can report out that a majority vote was not to take, not action. Now, how we're, if we're lost is part of the new policy. We can put some provisions in there that require some additional reporting out than what is typically required. It's your pleasure.
I think that is what you'll look at, bringing us back in our procedures.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I didn't do it, so.
And again, board's pleasure. I'm happy to put up some additional language in there to make it very clear going forward what, what to do, report it out.
So you guys, what would the board like to do on that? Do you want a motion?
I don't, I have, I have three board members coming as directions.
You have consensus.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, but as long as it's safe and we don't have any questions, please ask as well.
All right, great. All right, Wayne.
I'd just like to get some.
You have to come to the podium.
I'd be too.
Is it a settlement agreement or a contract? That's the.
So Wayne Agner, Trinity Journal again. I would just like to get some clarification. Both the board now and Margaret has said once the signature is on the paper, it's final. And now you're saying you're waiting for it to come back for a vote from the board. So I want to know what is final? I mean, do you have a settlement agreement without a vote of the board? Or is it final when your attorney and the board chairman signs the paper? You guys have said it's when you sign the paper. So I'm just, I'm somewhat confused, quite honestly, over when something is final.
I can, you can both do, you're right, Wayne. It is final when I do sign or whatever chair signs the document and the other party signs the document, which in this case was, both signatures were there and it was final. However, we may change the process, as you just heard, as we look at improving our procedures. Did you want to add to that?
So what you're, what I heard, the direction used and the new procedure is that as opposed to giving direction to staff to proceed forward on something and finalize it, is that the finalization will actually occur from the board. Bring that to you to, to final approve before the chair signs. Is that not correct?
Right, that would be in our upcoming new procedures. And I think he might have also been asking, do we have to have this contract come back even though we're saying it's final? Did I hear that right, Wayne?
According to you, hasn't there been a vote to approve it?
We, do you want to explain the ratification issue?
Well, I guess I, you shouldn't understand what specifically you want me to explain.
I already requested that it come back. It will be in a slightly different form to ratify your signature.
Even though it's already final, I think that's where the confusion is.
Okay, so the courts have looked at direction given from a board as having the legal effect of allowing the staff to move forward on something. So that's, that's why whatever direction is given is final. The ratification is to make sure that we go through the process where, and again, we're looking to change this, we're looking to have it that the board doesn't ratify after the board ratifies beforehand, which I think is a very smart way to do it. That allows it to be in the public, it allows the staff to have the clear direction and allow their minister to reflect it.
All right. Since Mr. Agner. Yes, you're right, I will let you. Thank you. Lisa Wright with Lewiston. I guess my question really is, in your closed session, did you have a final agreement to review as a board? And did you, in that action, also approve for the chairman to, chairwoman, to sign that agreement? Did you see that before it was signed and approved it? That's kind of fuzzy to me. Thanks.
So as our process was illustrated, I had direction to sign it. I think I put it in the paper. I had direction to sign that agreement. And when the other party was signed, I signed it and it's a final document. So what we're trying to change is have it come back a little bit more, so.
So if that's a true statement that you already had direction to have it signed, then why did it come back to the board to give you permission to sign the document?
It was just ratifying my signature, John. And it's for, it's for having some documentation from the full board. It's just a formality, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? To have that ratification done on the document?
Correct, it's exactly, and it's how it's been done, which we're looking to change.
Right, so it's been our past practice all these years. And you heard from the board, we're looking to kind of refine that. All right, I will be shutting it down, but you're my last one.
Stephen Jordan of A C P Farms. I wanted to address the board in perfect candor and clarity as possible. I wanted to take a second to explain our company and our purpose here in Trinity County and why we have decided to place our national headquarters actually within your county.
For this item, sir?
Yes, for this item.
Our closed session item discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get there.
All right.
I'm sorry. I was trying to get the background of it myself first, just so. Just make sure I get my six seconds back. It's not like that's it that long. Our company has decided, justified and allocated over eight figures into your county over the next three years. The spending has already began. We began in January of this year. And we decided to make Trinity County our national headquarters because of the natural, the human and the agency resources that you have here available to us. And what I mean by that is the molding of your regulations and statutes and laws and how we can operate as companies. It is our goal to work with the governing model that places our major concerns as an entity in a positive light for sustainability. We have proven that we are more than happy to continue to obey compliant measures as we have worked with almost every one of you. We have, want to work progressively and appropriately towards taxation, funding and all those types of things. Where our concern is as a company and where we, obviously, we're willing to do business with your county. We're willing to pay for taxation, different measures that have been brought to the table by the board individually and others. We want to be able to put forth into the community, but we want to be able to know where our money is going as an entity. If we're putting over eight figures into your county, we want justification of how it's going to spend. And so at this point, where our concern is with your closed meetings, or any future meetings, because we decide, we feel that it's best if we invest into your county, then we have a legal system in place and representation to abide by compliance. After this fiasco that's happened and the confusion, we want clarity as how is the concern of the affected individuals going to be handled by the representatives in the future, as in, what are we allowed to know, what measures are going to be taken for us to know before decisions are made, checks are signed, and when will the paper trails actually be available? Because I've done research on TAA and other individuals, and I can't find clarity, I find discrepancy in tax filings, 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4) filings, entity filings, IRS filings, and I don't find consistency in an entity, in where a check was written and how it was dispersed. So in the future, the clarity on where that allocation would go, if it's given before a signature, that'll prove beneficial for companies like us, because then we can decide at that point how much we actually want to do business with the county. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. All right, so Margaret, in answer to his question, I think if you have any questions, you can also talk to the auditor on their check process for more information there. And Margaret, I've said this obviously before, I know you and CIO Coons have been engaged on this topic prior to last week. So again, it would have been great water under the bridge, had you been here last time to help with some of this confusion. I'm not throwing David under the bus, I just, he didn't have the depth of information and dialogue that maybe you guys would have had, that you were getting from members of the public, the paper, whoever, so.
Sorry to interrupt.
And again, sorry for any confusion. I have not, is that you? Sorry for any confusion, and again, we will look at changing our process, we are operating on the processes we have done for the last, I don't know, 15, 20 years, perhaps, way before any of us. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to call me directly, some calls I've received, some I have not, so supervisor grows.
I just want to clarify with counsel, Ms. Wright asked a question that I would love to answer, but we are not allowed to answer because of the ground act, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And that's exactly why we have the provision of the other places.
If it's final, I can't talk about it.
You are correct.
Right, we're not able to have those. Sorry, Lisa, we would love to say a lot of things, but we can't because of closed session.
And just to clarify, once it's final, it doesn't mean it opens up every other closed session negotiation where things were negotiated back and forth. We don't go, we don't re, go back and reinvent that entire process, it's just the final.
All right, can I ask a question? If the board consents, would we be allowed to have a closed meeting on allowing our votes to become public? I'm asking to, if, if this board consents, would it, could we then have a discussion in closed session so that we could know where we feel each other on that original vote? Because I believe that's the perception I'm getting from the members of the public, is that, so I'm asking if that's legitimate? Can we do that, or is that not allowed?
Specifically on a specific issue, or globally about?
This specific issue. Can we have a closed session, if the board would like to, in order to say whether or not we could vote on making our vote? No.
To waive the closed session privilege?
For this specific item.
Yes, you would have to agendize it under the item that it was originally under, so it would be TAA litigation.
Madam Chair, may I make that motion?
I have a question first, before you go forward.
Yeah, you too.
Does it have to be a closed session that we have this discussion?
I'm, I'm okay with it not, I just wanted you guys to be.
So it can be closed or open? And does that really fall under the closed session requirements?
Yes.
So wouldn't that be part of your revision of our procedures, when you bring that back to us?
Well, not on, we can globally talk about it, but not on the specific.
Yes, I mean globally talk about how we move what we're allowed to report out, and not if we change our process and procedures.
Correct. I mean, it would most likely generally say that the board has the pleasure to report out, to waive, to waive the closed session privilege.
Right.
Which again, is not necessarily a remended procedure, because we've got some confidential social reviewing employee personnel matters, or things recovered under HIPAA, we don't, we don't, we would never advise that, but globally, us to come to a settlement.
So can we talk about it when that comes back as an item? Well, I think this specific item would bring closure to the public. I think they want to know what was voted on in, not what was voted, how the vote took place in the closed session. I believe that, if my understanding is correct, the public desired to know that outcome, and so.
Well, I wouldn't, you couldn't just vote what the vote was without voting what you voted on, so it would have to be.
That's fine.
Detailed list of what was voted on. If it were, it was a vote that took place, yeah.
Okay, I understand. Worth it. I actually have a motion, I'm waiting for a second.
I don't think, I was, because I don't think it's a, it's not an agenda item promotion, so it would just be requesting.
It was just whether or not they wanted to do it.
Yes, asking for consensus to get it back on.
Right.
And if there wasn't much consensus, I have consensus, I agree with Bobby.
And we'll just put it on.
We have two, so we need one more.
Oh, okay, I thought you just wanted direction, I'm just given direction.
Okay, unless the chair wants to give directions, that's fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move on to our consent calendar. These items include routine non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon the board by one rule call motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Board members. Supervisor Chadwick, did I hear you?
No, no chair.
Okay. I am going to pull item 3.5. Any member of the public wishing to pull an item?
I'd like to pull 3.2.
Anyone else for the public? Nope, okay. 3.2, we will go to your item, Tina. Approve the regular meetings, meeting minutes for October 1st, 2019, as submitted by the deputy clerk.
I'd like to pull it off of the agenda.
Okay, just bring it back.
There is a mistake on it, I want to correct it.
All right.
Bring it back from that meeting.
Fair enough. Do we need a motion on that, or do we just give direction?
A motion to pull it off of the agenda, you can just pull it off.
We can just pull it off, okay. So. Oh, we didn't, so. All right, for the rest remaining of the calendar.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as I meant, or accept 3, 2, and 3.5.
All in, oh, sorry. Supervisor Ben.
Aye.
Supervisor Brokes.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Chalver.
Aye.
Supervisor Morris. Yes. All right, so 3.2, you'll bring back to us next week, next meeting. Moving on to 3.5. Approve the, re, approve and restate the lease agreement with John Paldini and Wineglass Vineyards LLC for property located in Trinity Elbs Business Park, and authorize the director of Helping Hand Services to sign the commencement date rider and any future amendments. No impact to the general fund, $20,119 per month for federal and state programs. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Sadi Karissa, Director of Helping Hand Services. And with me I have Deputy Director Liz Hamilton. Liz has been working very closely with the landlord and the project manager for this expansion project and new building addition. So we are here to answer any questions, we've kind of prepared with data, information, and election.
Yeah, I pulled this item, just, it's a big construction project, and obviously more room, so I just want a little bit more prepared directly from you guys.
Absolutely. As you may know, our HHS campus buildings were built back in 1992, it's been 27 years. In 2017, Mr. Paldini purchased the property from the previous landowners, and it was with great pleasure, he was open to providing us an expansion. We had some really good discussions, because in our programs, in both social services and public health, with the Affordable Care Act, and with all of the new public health initiatives that are coming through, such as the whole health equity, I'm sure any of you have heard of the Social Determines of Health, there's many issues around obesity, diabetes, and then of course, the opioid concerns, there's definitely been some more funding, more opportunities for program growth in outreach and education. And with that, along with the Affordable Care Act, there's a Cowfish Expansion Initiative that's coming through. So obviously, with those new, bigger program initiatives, it's providing more funding, which provides more positions for the county to provide those services to our vulnerable population. Right now, our Public Health Department is housed in the wing where our Adult Services Program is housed. It's very tight, we have staff that are sharing offices, I mean, I think this probably 10 by 14 size of a room, so it gets very, very tight. So we've been needing some expansion for quite a while, and we're happy that Mr. Paldini was open to that. So this new building, we're calling it our Building 3 Project, is going to be dedicated to our Public Health Department, along with, the other half of it will be a conference room area for our full staffing. Right now, our full staffings are held at the Trinity Elbs Performing Arts Center, which we enjoy very much, but there is a high need for conference rooms in our county, and we really would like to have it on our campus.
Okay.
But ideally, public health, it's time for them to expand, move, have their own dedicated space. It's been my, my focus since I became director, to really expand public health. They do amazing work, and they have some amazing, amazing projects. They're working on their public health accreditation, which that would bring more funds to our county to expand these programs and improve our health. Our, our health scores, as Wendy West presented to you at her partnership presentation at the last board meeting, are very low. We have a huge concern and hope to improve our, our health in our county, to our communities. So again, this is a wonderful opportunity that I think, something that we do not want to pass up, that property is privately owned, there is no county general fund involved. It's been my focus since I've been working with the agency, you know, as you may know, obviously, the chief of office here for about 15 years, I really minimize our reliance on general fund. I mean, it's less than what percentage we get of that that we would ask of the general fund. So again, it's an opportunity to maximize those federal and state funds, to expand these programs, and provide more services to our county.
Great. Liz, did you want to add anything?
Well, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I just, this is really exciting for us, because it's something we've been wanting to do for quite a while. And like I said, our landlords have been very gracious and open, you know, we did have a lease appraisal done. For as long as I've been with the county and housed here the last 24 years, I don't think a lease appraisal was ever done. And Mr. Rick Dippen advised us to do that, just to kind of make sure we're within the guidelines of what's a fair market value. And we are definitely within the lower range of the fair market values, so it's a really good opportunity to do so.
All right, great, any other questions from the board? Or is it public? No? All right, thank you for the overview, it's, it's a big development for all of you, so.
We'll give you post as soon as go by.
Great, thank you.
I have a motion. Go ahead.
Yes.
Now you're not going to get one.
I'll say, I wasn't quite there yet, but, who's, is it your motion?
No, it's Bobby.
And who's the second?
Bobby's the second.
All right, all in favor. 3.5, anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, both.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and announcements, reports from department heads.
Good morning, Karen McCarry, Director of Tax Sifter. I wanted, I know I don't get up here as often as I should as far as department head reports, but I wanted to come in and give you kind of an update, you've got many irons in the fire right now, but I wanted to touch base, and first of all, say thank you for the opportunity to purchase Megabyte, we're pretty excited about that. Transition can definitely be challenging, so we've been experienced, and we've had a fun summer with the calendars with that program, but thank you still for the opportunity, so we're pretty excited about that. So far with this program, we've built the Secure, which is the businesses and boats and mining plants of that sort, we've built that out so far. This week, we're anticipating that we'll have the Secure Bill sort of out in the mail. We, we anticipate, there's going to be many opportunities with this program in addition to what we originally thought, there's going to be new about the POT, and there's going to be the DMV, and then also, one of the things we've utilized so far is with the cannabis permits, those funds are come to, we collect those funds for the county. We were able to utilize the Megabyte system in order to provide computer-generated receipts versus the handwritten, anytime we can get away from the handwritten receipts, it's a time saver too, and so for any reasons. One of the other things I wanted to make you aware of is this last, or actually, this this year we were hired, we hired a new employee, and so we, one of the reasons why we've reduced our hours, was because we, you know, with staffing and just everything that was going on, so as of Monday, we'll return our hours back to, from nine to four. I am also working on, I'll talk to the paper about the amount of press release as far as the hours, and then also for, with the new tax bills, there's going to be some changes, and so Secure kind of went off without hitch, and as far as, I do anticipate with the new property bills, that's going to create a lot of questions, so just so that they can anticipate, there's going to be changes coming about with that, so I was just thinking about that too on there.
Great. And when you extend your hours, is that just through the tax season, or through into the new year?
No, it'll, that'll be the new hours.
Okay, great. Questions?
No, forever, seven days a week, those are your hours, huh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, whoop, there we come. Sure.
It'll be quick, real. Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Real quick, first week in October, I had the opportunity to travel to Denver for the fifth annual Denver Marijuana Management Symposium. I had an opportunity to listen to people from around the country, Canada, Netherlands, Mexico, talking about different aspects of licensing, regulation with the marijuana industry, some people from Washington talking about the safe banking legislation that was coming through. Brought back quite a bit of information that I'll be sharing with the CEO, planning director, district attorney, with regard to what's going on around the country, and some things that can possibly help with our programs here in Trinity County. We're moving forward with testing for correctional officer, this Friday, we have another test scheduled. I'm told we have 10 applicants that we'll be moving forward with. The two people that we gave conditional offers to, for deputy sheriff, are still in the academy, so that's a good thing. We're still moving forward with them, and we're still planning on sending two of our own correctional officers to post academy in January for deputy sheriff. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
We had one, we had one K-9 that was out on sick leave, is he out?
The K-9 that is out in Hayport?
Yeah.
Actually, the K-9's not out on sick leave.
Oh, it's the handler.
It's the deputy that's out on sick leave.
Oh, well, I guess I feel better.
Oh, wait a minute. Thank you. He's, he's getting physical therapy, the deputy is getting physical therapy, they're calling to get the deputy back on the limited duty within a week or so.
I'm glad he's doing that.
Yeah.
My misunderstanding.
Sheriff, Sheriff, thank you for your support in Hayport this weekend, this Saturday. Absolutely.
Downriver sends a thank you, they noticed an increase in response and.
They noticed an increase in response and presence. And so, big thanks from Don River.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Morning. I haven't given a jail update in a little bit, so I just want to come by and tell you things that are on track. Next week, they'll be finishing up connecting all in all the sewer lines and they'll start on the water line that's the service to the jail, small extension. But the big news next week is that they'll, on the 28th, they'll be pouring the slab for the housing town base, or for the housing area. The slab is the last piece that needs before they start going vertical with construction. So actually, the challenges have been really, as always, it's getting stuff in the ground at the right depth and the right location. And so that's been going good and we're pretty much on track and we'll be coming to the next meeting with a budget update. Just wanted to touch base real quick and let everybody know that, just a quick announcement, that the airport committee will meet on Friday at 10 o'clock, I believe. I don't have the notice in front of me, but I believe it's at the engineering conference room.
It's in the DOT room.
DOT room, engineering conference room at DOT. So anybody's, if anybody's welcome to attend. Just also wanted to lay a board note. We did meet with FEMA out in Heim Palm, Hayport, and Junction City about the 2019 storm damage. And we're moving forward with that and still also tackling the 2017. And then also, I went out to Heim Palm, met with the folks in Heim Palm on last Thursday to discuss the slide that had happened there last year and that FHWA is working on it. And I don't know if I reported, but we did cut into the hill to competent soil. And so we got it on stable, we got it stabilized and then we also paved it with the paver that would have been, that was loaned to us from Eagle Rock. So they have a all-weather access through the winter and it's a stable access. And so we're very comfortable moving forward from there. Last thing I wanted to report, we were going to try to get the pinponts this year to do some paving, but realized there's some culverts that need to be replaced and we're working on that. And I was trying to get the guys to go out and replace the culverts here in the next couple of weeks. So it's still on our radar.
That? Questions?
Sure. Can you fill the potholes?
I believe they went out there with a bunch of mix and filled it.
But I don't know.
Yeah, they, I had authorized mix, then they had out there with some mix and I believe that they've taken care of it.
I did follow them. Well, you know, they're not yelling at me, it must have happened then.
So they're not yelling at you yet?
Nothing since last Thursday. Put it that way. I also have another question regarding Matt River. We can talk about it later.
Okay. I'll get a question.
Any other questions for Rick? I think.
Yeah, first off, thank you for the work you did in Trinity Center there. But I'm going to jump on Jeremy's district a little bit, but it's kind of tied to the TRRP, so I apologize for stepping on your toes.
Oh, I would.
Thank you. Well, you see, you know, I'm falling under the bus. Sky Ranch Road, TRRP has talked about being helpful in trying to get that culvert to the Sam and Bearin Culvert. I was just up the road the other day and there's, nothing's been done there except the stop sign. So what's the plan on that?
Yeah, we actually met with FEMA. That was one of the things that I mentioned, met in Junction City that we did discuss. That's an interesting one because the stream that goes up there is very much fish bearing and there is a very big focus on improving that culvert to make it fish passage. And so it kind of requires us to go from a pipe system to more of an arch bridge type system. So we are looking at making improvements, but we are going to be very challenged by right of way in that location as the gentleman points out every time we start a car there. So it's, it's going to be some tough construction and design, but we'll be working for, working along with it and keeping the devices moving forward.
Okay. That you are working on.
Oh, yes.
Making that Sam pass through that.
It's, right now, we're, it's better when we have the agencies calling us about money that they have to share with us because they want to make something happen. And that's where, that's the situation we're in at that location.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Anybody else?
Just realized there's donuts up there. Good morning. Kim, I'm the building and planning director. Several meetings ago, there was a question about recording fees regarding SC2 Affordable Housing and Jobs Act and specifically regarding mine claims, if they are included. This is a state law and yes, mine claims are included and are subject to $75 recording fee. That is a state law. I cannot believe there's anything the county can do about that fee. It's mandated.
Kim, can you raise it? I'm joking. Sorry, Kim, you're right on point there.
I'm reporting back. Please take a seat here.
You can beat me up later.
I'll have to dig out some more of the information. The gentleman came to us out of Shasta County.
He did? And they were applying Shasta County as well.
Somehow their board did something that he was looking for our board to do, so I'll get a little more detail. I don't remember exact detail off the top of my head.
Okay. I can also check into that too.
And there was some agreement from the board to look into it, so.
Right.
But I hear what you're saying and I'll just go back and see about his letter he might have given us, so.
Yeah, I recall that he did approach Shasta County and if they did make changes to that, I'd love to know about that. It was not familiar to me while I was there.
Yep. Okay. No worries. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
General plan?
General plan. Well, you saw a piece of it today, the housing element contract. The general plan, yes, that is, that is a project that I am uncomfortable moving forward without having a full staff, having a planner on board with the comprehensive update. But I would like to begin having a discussion of how to approach the general plan update and whether that be a discussion item at a meeting, whether the desire is to do a full update, comprehensive update at one time, or possibly take certain elements and do it piece by piece. But that is definitely, we need to get moving on. However, that is, it's a huge endeavor and to not have a full staff. Right now, I'm catching up on planning projects. There's quite a backlog and getting the departments, getting up to speed with the department issues and management of the department. So yeah, let's have that discussion.
So just so you know, it's not your fault, but I was promised that an RFP would go out by November of 2018. So now we're in November of 2019.
I see.
And it's of the utmost importance to me. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I don't want this to sit around another two years unless our goal is to make it to what, 40 years without one?
I will take it, yes. I will get that. I have the board with some proposals. If that is a pleasure of the board. Again, to take on the entire document itself is, if that is the desire, then we will definitely get that RFP written and get that out. But one other alternative that is something to be considered is taking certain elements together. That is the affordability of that and there are some benefits. There's pros and cons to both. So I would like that would greatly benefit me as a planning director on moving forward with that project.
Can I finish?
Yes. Sure.
We'll call over. So, Madam Chair, can we have this agendized sooner than later for this discussion or some sort of committee or whatever? If this is something that Kim has walked into.
Yes.
A situation where she's probably a little overwhelmed and everything's going on, but this does need to happen because actually when I say that, I think we are at 40 years. So maybe, I think 78 or 79.
Well, I was just going to suggest that we might agendize it and so you can get maybe a little bit clearer direction and we can discuss maybe an element at a time, given your staffing capacity. So is that something what you were thinking?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can go on of what I think she needs to be happening, but I think we just point, just agendize it and we can come on. Kim has questions to talk to me offline. Please give me a call or I'll stop by and be sorry he asked me. Moving forward.
Change direction, please.
We would like to have that for further, more in-depth discussion.
Excellent.
But again, sooner or later, I would like, I would like to see some sort of action moving forward by the first meeting, a plan.
Okay. How about November 5th?
You and Chair.
That'll be on target.
Okay. Just, and we can at least get some, a little more clarification for you. The whole general plan is a lot to take on and very expensive. So we'll get a little bit more information.
Okay.
That's where it's going to be.
Yes, I, well, I just want to say that I'm really glad that you chose to prioritize the housing element. We have quite a few things that our grants officer has been, or director has been working on and that I know we were updated on that. So I love the idea of prioritizing and I've shared with you before, I think it's better to go for that first down that we know we can get than our Palmary Pass. So I think, I agree that it'd be great to get it on November 5th. But your report that's in the backup is, I don't know who put it together and compiled it, but it was really good. I had to look up the new acronym, RHNA. So that was quite an interesting find. But thank you for choosing that housing element and going forward. We have many things that are about ready to happen, so I love the fact that you did that. So I appreciate it. Great report.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Any other department head? Okay. Moving on to CIO.
Nothing fractures. As Kim was leaving, I thought we kind of clarified besides the housing element, the safety element too. We were looking at those two going forward first. Sorry. Thought you got away.
Faster run, man.
Yes, absolutely. The safety element, now, the safety element in our general plan is not that old. It's in good shape, but with recent changes in state law and just obvious reasons for wildfire and flood, those are some vague issues that need to be tackled in the safety element for state compliance. And actually, there is laws that stay generally on or before your next housing element, you must make this, this and this change. And that is regarding land use, safety, conservation, and open space elements, I believe, and various other state compliance issues. But yeah, that would be, I guess, use the term low-hanging fruit, get that safety element updated. Land use will be, that'll be a, it's a big one. Yeah.
Let's bring that to the board's attention. Has been in discussion and moving forward. Better late than never, this is almost never, so I mean, we're moving forward and we're moving forward to discussion on the 5th, so we can kind of set a plan as to some deadlines and dates and we can start bringing things forward. But we have been moving forward and as Kim said, the housing element was number one because it makes us eligible for many different grants, so HCD and other avenues. And then, as she said, some of the low hanging fruit that we can do within house because the general plan itself is going to have to go out to contractor, but it will take a lot of staff time.
I understand that the reason the safety element and the housing element are low-hanging fruit is because we've kept up with those and because we've always said they're low-hanging fruit. And so somehow, very soon, we need to climb the top of the tree.
Yes, well said. Yeah. And back to the safety element real quickly, I did meet with the CAL FIRE planner. We have a regional planner who takes inventory on the county's codes. They visit each jurisdiction. In this case, it's Captain Shane Vargas. He's out of the Reading office and he reviews the general plan, any fire safety regs for CAL FIRE, and we've already had that meeting. They've already used our inventory. And so I will make sure that's part of the November 5th program as well because that is very, very important and we're already started a little work, like to report that a little bit of work, but I'm pursuing that. The board of forestry has to review the safety element before it's approved. They have a 90-day review and that is now an essential part of it, so.
All right. Great.
The board's discussing this moment of November 5th?
Thank you. That would have to report.
Okay. Thank you both. Moving on to reports from board supervisors. We'll start with you, Supervisor Graham.
All right. There was just one thing from the last meeting I didn't get to report out. It was from the RCRS meeting, the Golden State Finance. I believe I didn't talk about the [inaudible].
We what?
I did talk. So they're starting a big program dealing with, what is it, 50 million acres for a very high quantity of forest service land in California. They're going to start thinning and they're going to make wood pellets that get shipped to South Korea or China and they're used to run their coal plants or to warm up their coal plants. It's an environmentally friendly approach to the coal plants. So it provides some potential opportunity for us down the road. They haven't gone to specifics, they've just kind of formed the organization and the concept. But essentially, it's going to be a big biomass-dependent industry. They've talked about having wood innovation campuses around the state in the areas that would be impacted. And some of the things that are including and what they're going to look at is broadband deployment, infrastructure development. So it's kind of like organic waste diversion, carbon sequestering, overall fire prevention, forest health. But it's, you know, they're just getting started. It's a pretty exciting plan from what I've seen. And I think there will be opportunity for Trinity County to be more involved than just hearing about it secondhand. I was able to attend two of the CWPP meetings this last week and there's another one tonight in Burke Ranch. That's been very helpful and informative. I want to give a big thanks to Amelia and Charlie at RCD for taking the time in the evening to go down river and do these presentations. It means a lot to all the downriver community. A lot of people definitely expressed, you know, they feel like they haven't seen the county's presence down there in a long time. And so it felt like a really good, good way to kind of break that ice and start moving forward with future projects, current projects. to kind of break that ice and start moving forward with future projects, current projects. The RCD is up on, I think, Schoolhouse Road today, working on seven or 14 acres between Schoolhouse and Hennessy Road. So it does mean a lot to the community down there, and a lot of the problems are the one-way accesses in and out. They're severely overgrown, specifically Sawyer Heights and Fountain Valley Ranch Road. There's a lot of concern from the residents that have lived there for 30, 40 years plus and that have nice, big fancy homes and pay a lot of tax dollars, and they want to see some more of that getting returned to their public safety as far as access goes. And it kind of sparked this interest for me of wanting to start developing some kind of county survey that we can send out to all residents to kind of acquire some baseline information that I think would be valuable in moving forward with assessing people's needs and concerns. So that's something I would like to work on in the next few months. CAL FIRE was there, and I was able to learn that because of Jerry Brown's prison realignment thing, that is when we lost a lot of the eligible inmate crews to help with CAL FIRE. And because what's left in prison are the most violent offenders and things like that, they're not much of candidates for the position. So I think inmate crews are down maybe, don't quote me on it, but around 50%, or at least, you know, between 30 and 50%, and that is one of the issues that is being faced with available resources to tackle all of the brush. And, you know, I think it's a huge number of acres that need attention, and we can do, I don't know, I think an acre, maybe two acres a day when crews are working with RCD. So finding ways to branch out, and I think the governor is looking for solutions and where they can find more crew members to help facilitate these projects. But it was great talking with CAL FIRE about it, and that is all I have to report on.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
Noah, the county travel.
Supervisor Brown?
Noah, the county travel.
Supervisor Brown?
I didn't bring my ledger, but I do want to give a shout out to your district. I had my granddaughter up for the weekend, and Saturday was a blast, so that was wonderful. And we had a meeting, a very low-key meeting in Hayfork on an assessment needs, wasn't as well-attended as the organizers had how, wanted, but I'll bring forward more information. It's a way that you can go online and just assess your needs, and specifically our substation and the PUD, as you know, PTB was out, Wildwood was the last road in the county to come online, and Ed Pressey cut me in the loop, and it was Saturday that the Wildwood finally came back online, so shout out, if he's not here, tell us, for that, I chair the Community Action Partnership, as you know, it's a three-county. We are still looking for public, I guess you could say, that support, and also on SCUD, we are still two people short. So if anybody's interested in economic development or community partnership in other counties, please see me. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah, the county travel. For me, I do want to thank a few people. Thank you, RCD, in your 21st year of the Salmon Festival, along with Arts Council and all the wonderful artists that were along Main Street at the same time this festival was great, to see so many people in town. Also want to thank the Weaverville Car Show folks. They put on these events, raise money to help efforts in the county, and they have purchased some new lights for downtown here in Weaverville along the historic buildings, so thank you to them and the various volunteers who helped put them up, including the Chamber and the Arts Council. Though I won't be there, we've asked the Collaborative to give us some information that they'd like to contribute to, a proclamation for District Ranger Dan Dills, and you and I can, when we get that back, present that to the board down the road once they gather some information input from the group, from working with him. And I think that's it. All right. Moving on to Commercial Cannabis Ordinance amendments. Okay, federal lands legislation.
You still have not had a chance to.
Okay. Same for retail?
I'm still waiting on maps, so I don't know if you need me to.
True, right, thank you.
On the retail cannabis ordinance, we had presented the information that we had collected from, throughout the county in July to the planning, new planning director who wasn't at that time going to be taking it over, but now she is, and Jeremy and I spoke earlier this month, and there's really nothing more than that he and I can do. So Madam Chair, there's no reason for us to be, continue to be as an ad hoc on the list. Director Hunter has all our information, and Jeremy and I would make ourselves available. Once again, we were hoping that it would go forward in August to the Planning Commission and then come back to us, but with the Planning Commission's schedule over the last few months, that is not going to be possible. And so, once again, instead of trying to do the whole thing, as we talked earlier about general planning, Supervisor Brown, excuse me, and I discussed that perhaps we should go after the most important piece of it at this time, to bring retail, brick and mortar into the county would provide access to that pot of money that the state has if you have both retail and cannabis. So it's our hope and our encouragement to Director Hunter that that would be brought forward prior to the end of this year, but there's no reason, Jeremy, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I'm just saying.
So I guess we're officially asking that you, we don't need to be on that because it's really in the staff's hand, and, but Supervisor Brown and I will be available if Kim has any questions, but there's no reason to be an act.
All right, we'll take a break before we move into county matters for three to five minutes. And those who are. Set calendar. We'll double. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed up at the department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to move up the 5.2 item for Title III issues, so select proposals for funding pursuant to Title III, I'm going to put up first. Anybody else? Does that suit everybody? Okay?
Thank you.
So with that said, we'll move on to 5.2, select proposals for funding pursuant to Title III, secure rural schools with the Self-Determination Act of 2000, and authorize the county administrative officer to sign the agreements. Eighty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars from Title III funding. All right, so, Richard, have you taken this issue?
Yeah, as you said, we have eighty-seven thousand nine forty-four available. We were oversubscribed by almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars, one being the largest, which was the ambulance. Anthony, let me scroll down here real quick. Which one was that, Susie or Star? Yeah, Star, they asked for almost the entire amount. After looking at it and reviewing staff made a recommendation not to fund for a couple reasons. One, they can guarantee that 100% of their activity will be on federal lands, and two, 20% of their activity is outside of Trinity County, and these funds are for, apparently Trinity County, but are 100% supposed to be for activities on federal lands. So I can go ahead and read what we have recommended or existing steps. So we have the Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire Department, $2,700 are recommended for a Salyer Volunteer Fire Department, $4,059 recommended, for Southern Trinity Volunteer Fire Department, $4,050. Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department was $3,240, for Trinity County Resource Conservation District, $23,490, and the watershed was $26,872, and finally, Weaverville Fire Department, $23,490. Staff has made a recommendation based on all of the proposals were within Title III requirements.
Questions of Richard on this item? Do you have any questions of Richard? Okay, any questions, comments from the public on this item?
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Melanie Higgins, I'm Chief of Southern Trinity Volunteer Fire Department, and I'd really like to thank you for your support and funding. We will be purchasing a slip-on unit for a donated pickup truck that we bought. It'll better help us serve our community, and just last night, excuse me for my appearance, we had a structural fire and it went into the early hours of the morning, and actually that slip-on unit would have really helped. Water access, you know, is everywhere, if we could have just stationed the pump to fill our engines, it really would have helped. So we appreciate your support, and if you're ever in our side of the county, you'll be safe, and I encourage you, Jonathan Lane comes to our board meetings, but if anybody ever wants to come to our fire board meetings that are on the first Thursday of the month, and we appreciate every, everything that you do for the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
So Pat Frostin, just speaking on behalf of myself and the organization, and I want to use this opportunity to bring up two quick things. One is a reminder that the companion title, Title II, that goes along with Title III, has the resource advisory committees that are appointed by the Secretary of Agriculture, and the Forest Service has yet not gotten any of those operational. There's about $400,000 a year for the two years of this current reauthorization that is sitting there waiting to be spent and thinking about Supervisor Brown's comment about, you know, trying to get more work done on the ground. That's money that could be getting more work done on the ground if we can get those resource advisory committees functional anytime soon. And that has to be no later than, than being operational to have the funding at least approved by September of next year, and it's not a quick process, so just whatever you can do to encourage the Forest Service or the Secretary of Agriculture's office to get this going would be much appreciated. The other is that I am with the Trinity Center Community Service District, and the issue of the heart monitors that was brought up by Star is a big issue in the county. All of Trinity Center has an ambulance, they have the same generation heart monitor, Coffee Creek has the same, Trinity County Life Support has the same, and within about a year, the manufacturer no longer provides support for those heart monitors. So I would certainly ask that if the, you know, the county grant office could help keep an eye out for possible grant opportunities that might help all of those organizations that are providing that first medical response, that would be really, really good. That's all.
Pat, could you send me the specifics of the committee, so I use the right terminology?
For the Title II? Yes, I will do that, yeah.
And what level would you suggest starting at, or just like the secretary and companions?
I would, I would think, well, the starting point, and I can query on Friday at the Trinity County Collaborative, would be the supervisor's office. I don't know whether the local recommendations have made it through the supervisor's office to the regional office, but I will find that out and then I'll let you know what door to knock on.
Any idea where the hang-up, is it regional?
I don't at this point.
How it's happening?
For the rec?
Yeah.
I think they're still waiting on enough qualifications.
That could be part of the problem, I'm not sure.
That was my understanding at the last collaborative.
The last collaborative meeting.
That they were waiting on filling the different.
The categories, there are three different groupings.
Yeah.
Let us know when we need to resuminate a letter or whatever.
Okay, thanks. I know it's kind of tangential, this issue, but again, thanks to the staff for the very thoughtful review of the application.
Thank you, thank you, Susie. Richard, speaking of heart monitors, I know this is an issue for all our department, volunteer fire departments across the county. Could we look and see if at all the CBBG funding that we have sitting there can be used to help out those departments?
Yeah, I can look into this. There'll be, the first thing I'll ask, yeah, will be, does it meet the income qualifications, which 80%, or 51% to be 80%? We can look into that, and yes, I'll ask Susie Cookums to see if there's, if there's not that, if there's something else.
And for those that do need that income qualification, maybe we can help them out of that pot of money.
Yeah, so there may be some ideas in there.
Okay, thank you. All right, with any other comments, questions on this item? Nope? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board and we entertain a motion.
Motion to approve of 5.2 as presented.
And a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Please, no, so moved. Thank you, everyone, thank you for your work on behalf of those who are living here in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for moving this on.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and then I'm also going to take 5.3 ahead of 5.1, so they can move. This will be a quick item, I think, but. Pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.50A, authorize hiring a social service aid employee number 02313 at Range G155, step C in the Health and Human Service Department, Child Welfare Service Division, effective September 10, 2019. Approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for a social service aid at A-step is $4,298, and at C-step is $4,659. Good morning, Shelley.
Good morning, Chairman of Board, I'm Shelley Nelson, HR Director. So Health and Human Services was recruiting to fill a vacancy for a social services aid position. The recruitment started back in July. The applicant that presented best to offer the position to actually was a former employee that previously held this position, as well as social worker one and two, which are higher level positions. Very excited to be able to offer this to this individual who has accepted, but the department would like to offer them above A-step, at C-step, based on the experience and the benefit that the department and the community would receive from having this individual working for us. So we are asking to have it retroed back to the date of hire, which was September 10th. I was unable to get this in time on the next, the last board meeting, so I brought it to this one.
Okay.
Counsel, is it legal to retract?
Yes, and it's not technically retracting, you're just, you're faking it. You would have to do one retract, okay, I think that's right, yes. It is legal. In one of those days.
Okay, any questions?
All right, I'll entertain, any questions from the public, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Much new proof, I've got three as presented.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved, thank you. All right, we have one more item before we go back into closed session.
Still, can I see the section?
It is 5.1, request to re-agendize discussion adoption of two resolutions consenting to the inclusion of properties within Trinity County's jurisdiction in the California HERO Property Assessment Clean Energy Financing Programs. No fiscal impact. It is being brought to the board because it obviously has been before the board in the past. the board because it obviously has been before the board in the past. And our deputy clerk found some in the notes that it wasn't to be brought back at all. So in order to bring it back, I could put it on or since maybe not every board member was on the board at the time, I thought I'd bring it back to the board for further discussion. And with that, I will turn that over to Supervisor Brown as this is his item.
And it's my first item on the agenda ever. So thank you. So through RCRC, I was able to meet Y-Green and, and learn about the PACE program options. And a big thing that's changed, and we talked on it lightly initially, but the options for homeowners have been expanded to include things like backup generators, metal roofing, siding, hardy board, gutters, hardscaping, so removing fire-prone landscapes and putting in hardscapes, and biomass stoves, a number of other things. But essentially, the opportunity's expanded to cover more fire prevention things. And I thought it was a valuable tool to offer to residents, constituents. And we learned about this old resolution, so I'd like to have the opportunity to bring it back. Also, Chris Peterson is here from E3, which is Energy Efficiency and Equity. They're another PACE program. So I think he has a few words to share. And, you know, I've talked with Terry about it. She shared some concerns. We've talked again about it. And it seems like if we can bring in a variety of PACE programs so people have a choice, we weren't trying to be specific to Y-Green or anything like that. And so, Chris, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, please. Thank you. I'm Chair. Members of board, my name's Chris Peterson. I am with E3. We are a PACE provider here. And my colleagues, Emily Goodwin with Y-Green and Dustin Riley from the HERO program, have also addressed the board as well. I've been in PACE for several years. I actually started with the HERO program. And, you know, from what I understand, historically, there's hesitation to move board here in Canada with the programs. And we believe that those concerns, as many of those concerns have been addressed legislatively at the state level. There have been significant improvements to the consumer protections, as well as contractor oversight for the PACE, for the PACE industry effective as of January 1 of this year. We are now regulated by the Department of Business Oversight. So we have a parent in a situation which before we were, for lack of a better term, self-regulated. We do evaluate the applicant's ability to pay, which is a new evolution of the program, which I think is very important. And we have mandatory contractor training so that we don't have contractors saying whatever they want to say without any repercussions, which has been another issue that we've had to mitigate through this legislation. And furthermore, to touch on what Supervisor Brown was saying, SB465 does expand PACE to include financing for fire mitigation improvements. You know, we like to see this financing option being used to serve a public policy. I think it's, we think that's good business. Having multiple providers as well can help with the residents. We believe competition is essential, keeps the rates low, keeps the customer service high. And ultimately, it's private property, right? We do believe that allowing residents to have the multiple choices of how to finance these improvements to the property is enabled with the property owner. So along those lines, we, like I touched on before, competition's essential, having a choice between PACE providers that are currently licensed. There's only five residential PACE providers that are currently licensed. There are three different issuers. We have GSFA, CSCDA, and W Archery. Familiar with those agencies. And CSCDA was actually born out of CSAC, so CSAC Finance Corp. So this is something that's, you know, that's been instilled in our, in our state for a long time. So again, I'm happy to answer your questions. And again, I know this is, this is a much different program than what you saw before. And I'll tell you, because I'm one of the people that, I'm a licensed realtor. I was the only realtor ever hired by the PACE industry to help them understand how this interacts in the real world compared to what it looks like on paper through, through legislation. And so understanding that, that we've really helped to push and we've all supported these, these changes, this was rolled out from, from, from people that were born in public policy. They weren't business folks in terms of how do I run a finance company? And so there was some bumps in the road. However, those have been ironed out. A lot of these people have been replaced with, with financial professionals. And now we run a very tight ship when it comes to consumer protections and making sure that our standards are upheld by the contractors that do business with us. And all of these things are, again, super important to, to keeping the long-term viability of this, of this industry, which we're committed to.
Perfect timing. Wow.
Like I've done this before. But I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. And I'll take a seat.
Yes, Chris. Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public? So again, the item today is to reagendize the item for further, more in-depth discussion on this item.
I think my concern with this item is that, you know, I like it that you can go and borrow money and all that kind of stuff. That doesn't bother me. But if I went out and borrowed money from a corporation that gave me this stuff and I filed bankruptcy, then it went away. What this is doing is that it's putting on your property taxes. So if I buy that finance, that foreclosed house, I will have to pay for that loan. And that just bothers me. I don't, I don't see how you can have it where you put a loan on to other people.
Your light, light's not working on this, so.
It's my understanding that that is not the, it doesn't get passed down like that.
Then why is the county's tax not being collected?
Wait, wait, wait.
We put it back to the item.
Right. Right. So Terry, did you want to say something?
Well, I can.
Perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. So initially, when this program came out, I'm involved on several committees. I was not on board. I did not want to support it and being that the consumer protections were not in place. And there was some, there, we fought hard for some legislation to be in place for this to protect the consumers. There are still a few loopholes that I'd like to see take place, like Paradise, for instance. The insurance levels, they didn't, that was one loophole that they didn't have in place so that if you, you put these improvements on your home and then you didn't insure it for that. So there are a lot of residents in Paradise that did not follow through and increase their insurance. So now they're still responsible for those, those improvements that they made. But the, usually, they take priority as far as like when he's referring to that, that some of those things have to be paid off before. So it's not something that, yeah, he's not accurate in what he stated. So I'm, I'm in support of this now. So it gives them another option. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So again, the item before us is to have it reagendized for another meeting. And we can have a more robust discussion on, on the item.
Chair, just from what I've heard today, there's obviously interest in having more discussion. And so I would need to put it on to, for later, gentlemen.
All right. Do I have a second?
I have an addition I'd like to your motion, and that's to hear all of the PACE programs or have them available instead of just, last time we only had two that were available.
That's right.
So is that amended a motion?
Sure.
You're seconding it.
I'd go ahead if you want.
No, I just want to know if that was part of that.
I just want to make sure that we hear all of them. Yes.
I'll second that. Okay. So a motion and a second to bring the item back. And we will find a date and we'll see where, how our agendas are looking with some long days coming up. So we'll find a date and then we'll coordinate with those to come and present again. I think that's what you're asking. Okay. So.
Motion and a second. All in favor to bring it back to the board?
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, we will have it at a future date. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Okay. So with that, we will continue back into closed session with our item with Director Tippett.
Turn the camera on.
Thank you. Let's take a minute. Tippett up.
I did it.
All right.
Back to Ruth, then.
Rick, you're in the way.
It's been glasses on.
So make sure I'm going to get the correct number. So we went back in closed session to discuss 1.2 and direction was given to Director Tippett. With that, the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you November 5. Thank you.